I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order and let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, and the time is 1:04. And we will begin with an opening prayer by Trustee May and led in the pledges today by Trustee Sumler.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us here today. Thank you for all of our presenters today. I ask that you be with them and provide them travel mercies as they go home today. Lord, I ask that you just stay with us in our district and with all of our people here as we make this transition towards a new leader. Thank you for all of our graduates last week, Lord. I just ask that you walk with them into the summer and into the fall. And I thank you for all of your many blessings, and I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ladies. Today, we do not have any public comments, so I'll skip over that reading of that information. And we are on to agenda item Interview Superintendent Search Firms. I'd like to begin by saying good afternoon to everyone and thank you all for being here today as part of our ongoing process to identify the next superintendent for our district. I'd like to take a moment to provide a brief update on where we stand. We have appointed an interim superintendent to ensure stable leadership and continuity for our students, staff, and community during this transition. In parallel, we issued a request for proposals, an RFP, to search for firms interested in partnering with us to find candidates who not only meet the qualifications for the role, but also reflect the values, goals, and priorities of our district and community. Typically, this type of procurement process is managed by the district purchasing department and designated selection committee. However, given that the hiring of the superintendent is a core responsibility for the Board of Trustees, the selection committee in this case will be comprised of the seven trustees. We will be conducting this process with the valuable assistance and guidance from Brian Broussard, Director of Purchasing, and Katie LaBord. And the board is very appreciative of their support and expertise throughout this process. Mr. Broussard, would you please come forward to get us started and walk us through our plan today?
All right, just a couple of minutes to get prepared. So what I'd like to do, President Odenweller, members of the board, is just, that was a lovely lead-in, but I'd like to just kind of give you a little feedback on how we got here. So we put out a request for proposal for these services. We received nine responses. Of those nine, eight met the scope of work for the services. After a review of the proposals by myself and Ms. LaBord, all eight were invited to present to you all today. Of those eight, six are here today. And so I'm going to, if it's okay, officially read off the list of the presenters. So we have the Texas Association of School Boards, Beach Boyd and Associates, Walsh and Gallois, I asked for help on that, McPherson and Jacobson's, Texans for Excellence in Education, and Ray and Associates. So what I'd like to do is just take each of you through just a little bit of how this process will go. We'll kind of have a two-part process because when we move into the evaluation phase, I'll kind of come back up, but I don't want to bog you down with too much of that right now, okay? So each firm will be given five minutes to set up once their name is called. Presentations will be 10 minutes uninterrupted with a hard stop. I have enlisted Dr. Lambert as our official timekeeper. The timer will be over here on this computer, and he has assured me that he knows how to work it. So what will happen after the 10 minutes is questions will then be opened up by the board. Presenters may use any printed materials or online presentation to support, or support to answer questions from you, the board. It is not an opportunity for them to continue their presentation if they've run out of time. It's a very important distinction. You will, in just a second, be provided scorecards. I'd like to let you know about these scorecards. They are not mandatory for you to use. Each of you have a laptop with you. When we get to the evaluation phase, you will actually enter your scores into our third-party E-Bid system. Now, I will tell you as a bit of advice, it might be good to use them because when you get to your data entry portion, it will obviously help you, not required. Those documents, along with any documents that have been provided with the presenters and given to you during this presentation, we will collect at the end, okay? Now, everybody's asked about the scoring. You've got two screens in front of you. The main screen that you all use, that will be for presentations if a presenter has them. Your laptops, you don't need them at this time. We've got a ton of help for you whenever we get to that section with Ms. Deska, our senior buyer, and Ms. LaBord, our assistant director, and of course, Dr. Lambert to help guide us through that. So how will you go through the scoring? An email will be sent to you with a link. That link will take you to the E-Bid website and prompt you to create a username and password. After that, you will be asked to acknowledge our terms and conditions for scoring. The terms and conditions presented to you are the exact same all other evaluators in Conroe ISD acknowledge prior to scoring. If you do fill out the scorecards, again, I would recommend at the end that you place them in alphabetical order by the firm or what's called the supplier. The reason is, is that's how they're laid out in IONWAVE, so it just helps to keep you straight when you're doing your data entry. Since the in-person, in-presentation and Q&amp;A were a required step for the evaluation, we did not send any of you a link to create the login prior because they must have come here to do the evaluation, or presentation to be considered for the evaluation. So Katie, I would like to confirm that we have the Texas Association of School Boards, Beach Boyd Associates, Walsh and, Walsh Gallois, McPherson and Jacobson's, Texans for Excellence in Education, and Ray and Associates. So Ms. LaBord will be preparing the scoring module while the presentations are going on. And then, at the end, once the final presentation is done and you feel that you have asked all your questions, at that time, if you would like to take a break or a quick recess, I'm going to leave that up to you as the board. We're here to do whatever you need to. But I will say that we will not send you the link or anything until we're back in session. I have, I would like, if it is okay, Ms. Odenweller, to have you call the names of each presenter. Will help with assisting on keeping time. You obviously, as the board president, would know when everyone has done asking questions, and it would not cause any confusion for these folks, all right? I was going to say I'm scared to ask any questions. All right. So like I said, once we get to the scoring section, I'll come back and we'll talk, work through that, okay? I think you have the scorecards.
I'd like to say thank you again for your engagement and your commitment to working with us on this. It's been invaluable as we've prepared for today. Thank you very much. Even when he was in a training yesterday, he was answering my messages. Oh, it's already labeled. Okay, great. All right, so... Is everyone ready? All right, well then, our first one is Texas Association of School Boards. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm George Kazanis with the Texas Association of School Boards, Executive Search Services. Just have to say again, thanks to your staff for their organization. I love organization, and it's been fantastic, all the information and the communication to us. So thank you very much. And I know this is a very big decision for you, and you have outstanding firms that you will be hearing from today. And again, thank you, though, just for the opportunity, on behalf of Tasby, to be here. Again, what I'd like to do then is start the presentation. And all of you know, of course, about Tasby. Who are we? We have been an association serving school boards since 1949. We recently celebrated our 75th anniversary. But specifically about the role that I have with Executive Search Services, it began in 1988. It began at the request of school boards. That's the majority of our services have been because of the request of school boards. And so we want to thank you for your participation in Tasby, for the number of programs that you participate in. I notice, of course, your HR services that you have with us and the different reports and salaries, market studies that you do, our insurance products, our Byboard. Saw most recently, of course, you had in '24 in December, a rebate of over $70,000. So thank you so much for participating with us. I joined Tasby in 2023, so I retired from public schools. I had a 32-year career in education. I was a superintendent, though, 24 of those years. So the big majority of my time has been as a superintendent. I've served three different districts of three different sizes. The first one was one that I would say I more grew up in in terms of different roles. I was a principal, assistant principal, principal, and even an interim superintendent before being named superintendent. So that was in China Spring. Then I moved to Wichita Falls and enjoyed multiple high school district, excuse me, different part of the state. But then, when Waco Midway came open again, I moved back to the Waco area, which is my home, and served Midway for over 11 years. I think Midway's certainly smaller than Conroe ISD, but very similar in terms of the expectations of the community, the expectations and values that they possess, and for our students and families. So it really was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. But Tasby came along, and I started as Division Director of Field Services for about a year until the retirement of Mr. Felkner, our former director, and we merged divisions. And Tasby asked me to lead both for efficiency's sake, as well as my desire for this particular type of work. So here's my team. Marion Strauss, Dr. Strauss, has been, is a senior consultant, has been with Tasby over 10 years, and so she's my colleague, and she will be a part of this search if we are so hired. Also, Dr. Robert Duron. Dr. Duron is a former superintendent as well. Former Associate Executive Director of Tasby is now working part-time in our area. You'll see the different map there, if you will. That is the merging of our two divisions. Those are our field service representatives. And that is one of the advantages that we have. I have former superintendents, a team with over 30 years of experience each that have been superintendents, and they're all across Texas. So they serve superintendents on behalf of Tasby as field service representatives. They assist, of course, though, with Executive Search Services now. They help with our advertising and promotion of your position, as well as the screening and referencing of the different candidates. We do have a program coordinator, though, that is available, not only to our candidates, but to you as board members in the process, Joy Rivera there in Austin. And since we started in 1988, we have served well over 800, we're close to 900 school districts, doing searches, as I said, for, since 1988. And we've enjoyed collaborating with boards. And one thing on the right-hand side of your folder that was passed out to you, you'll see, I know you saw in our bid package, but it does have our fee and majority of all of the services we provide, our fee is all-inclusive. So there's no additional dollars or bills or reimbursements. It's all one fee that we are proposing to you today. So what we do, our focus is just on searches. We have decades of experience. And while we excel over 35 years, and one of the things is our track record. Just wanted to say that over 90% of our superintendents have at least three years as a superintendent. We do know well over 80% of them also stay five years or longer, so we're dedicated to that. Your search will be customized. Please understand that. Our searches are, if we are selected, we have a very inclusive planning meeting with you to understand your wants and needs as well specifically, so that we can customize the search to best meet, of course, your needs as Board of Trustees, as well as your community's expectations for this important hire. The search process, we rely, as I said, on my search consultants throughout to narrow the pool. We will have your search, of course, posted and advertised statewide, but also because of who you are, in Conroe ISD, we would anticipate a national search as well. Would draw candidates to your district and at least consider your district for your consideration on the board. But throughout all of this, though, our process is to align with you, to align your wishes and hopes for your next superintendent. As I mentioned, then, of course, very, very critical is the planning meeting. That is when we will get commitments from you about a timeline, deciding when to begin your search, when to close applications, when to come in and talk to you all about candidates and things of that nature. We also need to be sure you're committed to it because one of the things is that, of course, I don't think I have to say this, but all seven of you must be committed with dates and attendance throughout the process, so we do have a fair process for all of our candidates that apply to you. We'll finalize and talk to you at the planning meeting about qualities and characteristics. You'll notice now I'll refer to this booklet on the left-hand side of your folder that was provided to you. We did put some that we have found with, since 1988 in our research, some top qualities and top characteristics that we have found to be successful with our superintendents and success in school districts. Just wanted to point those out. But then finally, we'll talk about community involvement. What does that look like? We certainly have an online presence with surveying of your community to learn their hopes and dreams, their thoughts, the profile they would like to see in the next superintendent. But we also want to be sure that we, you understand how available we are for community forums, town halls, things of that nature. With the size of your district, we could see many different ones throughout your community based possibly on your feeder patterns of schools, things of that nature, so that we're out and about. One thing that's been effective for us as well has been a trustee-invited type of forum that you invite maybe two to three, four individuals that you would want to be sure we talked to, and we have lunch with them and have an opportunity to delve into the superintendent process and building of the profile. So during the search, we're doing that work. We're taking care of this. We provide our own application system. We are not burdening your district staff whatsoever. We are providing all of the advertising, all of the recruiting that needs to be done, as I mentioned, the survey. One of the things we and our boards enjoy about our application system is our video component. It's an opportunity for you to put a name to a face, if you will, the opportunity when we're looking at candidates, so you actually see this person, who they are on camera, how they respond, how they react, things of that nature to different questions. And so we have found that to be very effective. We'll talk about your interview process and how that looks, and look at the applicants with you. We can, we will customize that. We are certainly an advocate of an open and transparent process with all of you, but we also understand your time and your time commitments, and we will work with you as well if we're narrowing down candidates and at least having some recommendations for you, too, so, just so you understand that. One of the things, too, we like to do is schedule and talk with you about, after you've gone through an interview process, is a site visit. We highly recommend that. It's an opportunity for the board, not the quorum of a board, but two to three board members that do have the opportunity possibly to visit the candidate's his or her district and learn more about the district, meet some folks in the district, and get to know maybe sitting board members, community members, teachers, staff, just so you have a better idea of who this individual is and where they're coming from. So that's the site visit. Of course, with the selection and transition, just understand that Texas law requires the naming of a lone finalist. Texas law has a confidential process, so our process is confidential throughout the process of the applications and your review and interviewing of candidates. But at 21 days, when you name the lone finalist, of course, it's there. It's out there. And so after 21 days, then you would vote to hire. And one of the things that we're proud to offer here at Tasby, though, is a transition that is part of our fees. It's not an additional fee, in which we'll come back at your choice, maybe three months, maybe four months, maybe five months, to come back in and do a transition workshop, similar to Team of Eight, but specifically about how is it going, the relationship, expectations, communication channels, possibly superintendent evaluation, things of that nature, so that we're off on the right foot. One of the things, too, about, I'll add, as I have 30 seconds left to go, is in our vetting of candidates, we do have contract with third-party background checks, so that is included as well. It's not any additional charges. That's all your criminal county, local type of report, as well as a credit report, as well as bankruptcy report, and then also a social media review of candidates. So that's included. Our guarantee, within two years, if a candidate does not work out for you, then we will come back with no charge to launch your search again. Certainly hope that does not happen, but we want to be sure you understand our guarantee. So I'm going to click through those because my time is up, and see if you have any questions of me.
All right. Do we have any questions, trustees? Hopefully, it's not long, but yes. I want everyone to have their opportunity, but I'd just like to be succinct. Any other questions? All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one question for you. Forgive me if it's in there, if I've missed it. But how do you assess the data from each candidate from their previous districts?
Certainly. More importantly than ever is finding the superintendent that has a success record. And so we have a number of tools. Of course, there's tools beyond the state assessment, but that's very important. State assessments are important. So we would look carefully at their prior performance in their district. There's analytical tools we can look at. We can gather on ratings of their campuses and scores and really their effect. How well have they done over the number of years that they've been a part of their district? As you all are well aware of, the 2023 results have been released. We're anticipating '24 soon, so that's going to help. And of course, our kiddos just took the '25 one. So we'll have much richer data than we've been able to have because it's been in the courts, unfortunately. So we're looking forward to having that for you. So that's one area to assess their effectiveness. I think other things to look at is, of course, audits and looking at first reports, looking at things of that nature. The financial management is so critical in understanding our school finance system, see how they're doing in those areas so that they do come to you. That's why we also offer that background check because you also want them personally to be able to be a strong person of character with their own finances as well.
And then we'll have a dashboard that we can assess all of that data. Is that how that...
Sure, we can gather that together for you because, but we, in the planning meeting, that's why it's so critical. We want to understand the other types of data that you would like to have. We know academic performance is critical. And secondly, would be, I think, financial data would be critical. Many districts may have their own community-based type of accountability systems, too, that we would gather, pull that, pull those reports for you. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question. Are you, you done?
Yes, Mrs. Dawson, yes.
How does the process work for giving us the names of applicants? Do you vet them first, or do you send us every single applicant that comes through?
That would be at the will of the board. As I said, our process is open and transparent. But if this board so chooses, we certainly won't send you every candidate. Because how we do that is, we do categorize and put them in order in terms of those that have superintendent experience in their career, currently sitting superintendents, and then those that may follow with deputy-type superintendent, assistant superintendent. I think, if you remember in the slide, one of the things is in the planning meeting is finalizing that qualifications, characteristics, and it would be really important for me to hear from all of you about that. It could be simply, I've done it before in searches, where the qualifications you must have been in at least minimum central assistant superintendent and above. So that minimizes them. But yes, we're more than happy. We can do that in terms of cutting that down because many of them may not have, for example, enough years of experience in their current role. Many of them may not have been vetted correctly in terms of just their body of work. We will then be able to provide you then a shorter list of those candidates because I know it's time-consuming and very difficult. We'll certainly provide you information about the overall, the body, how many applied, and the scope of the number, but we can certainly work with you all as trustees to minimize that burden on you.
That was actually my question. So it's negotiable is basically what you're saying, as far as who's presented to us?
Yes. This is your search. You're the trustees that said at the very beginning, this is a very critical decision as you transition a new leader to your district. So we want to partner with you in that process, and partnering with you is customizing it to your needs.
I just, I didn't note, sorry. I did not notice in here how you will communicate and convey all of this to the trustees so that we're all informed and all in real time and, you know, there aren't some that get it and some that don't and all of that. So I'm just trying to, other than the site visits, I realize we can't create a quorum and things like that. But how do we, how will you be communicating everything to the board?
Sure. As a former superintendent, I understand how important that is. As you said, that all of you receive the same information, so that is one of my cornerstones, yes. So that is, in terms of communication, it could be as often as weekly communications in terms of email, email reports, status reports. One of the things that you will also receive are some deliverables to each and every one of you. Those deliverables include the results of our online surveying that we conduct for you, as well as then the community meetings that we have, that we build for you. So you will also be receiving that ahead of time before you're, we're actually talking about candidates. You will have that information with your communities feeling, thinking along the ways. And so you have also milestones and deliverables along the way, too. But absolutely, your communication would be as needed, but as weekly, and it will be with your chief consultants, which will be your lead consultant, and Dr. Marion Strauss. As was in the PowerPoint would be second.
And then, one last question. If trustees have questions, do they reach out to the, to you?
To me. Yes. Like in my folder there, you have my business card, which also has my cell number, my work number, yes.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. You're very welcome.
Can I ask one final question? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you accept placement fees from candidates?
Accept placement fees? No.
No. Okay, thank you.
We have no fees whatsoever related. The only fee, in full dishonesty, that we ever charge is not for candidates for a particular job, particular superintendency. We do conduct workshops, minimal $20, $25 fee for lunch, but it's mock interviews. It's a way we build our repertoire of learning about candidates throughout Texas and outside of Texas, resume building, coaching a little bit with them, very nominal fee, but that's not based on a district, oh, ma'am.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much for your informative presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Best of luck to you.
All right. Our next, well, BBAC. There we go. Do you have a presentation that you need to get set up for? Okay, thank you. So while she's getting set up, we can take time to do our score sheets if you want to at this time. Yes. Yes. Thank you very much for coming in today.
Yes, great. Thank you for having me. My name is Cherie. I'm with BBAC Headquarters LLC. We are a Texas domestic entity formed as a staffing agency. So we've actually been doing acquisitions for about five years now. We started our entity back in Indianapolis, Indiana. We bring our headquarters here to Houston about a year and a half ago. We are still a small business. We, you know, we're just under five hundred employees, so we definitely are here to support the staffing agenda. BBAC proposes our support to Conroe ISD to conduct a high-impact, inclusive, targeted executive superintendent search. With that, you know, we do want to provide community engagement and board engagement. We're going to do the statewide, you know, state and national search for this, you know, strategic candidate that you guys need. We do want to do marketing and outreach on this, getting feedback from the community, getting your feedback so that we can actually place someone here that is, you know, here for you guys. Screening and evaluations. We are going to definitely screen each candidate that we get. Far, I know, you know, with the questions you had in the last presentation, far as screening, we will basically get a final selection, and that's when we will go ahead and notify you guys. We will have a dashboard in place for you guys to check on, you know, on the status of this. We will have a system set up so that you can see, you know, what's going on. You can actually go ahead and shoot your feedback if you need that, you know, if you need to. We will also have a structured space for you to go ahead and if you need any, you know, any resources or have any issues, we'll be able to give you a, you know, you'll be able to go ahead and put in a ticket and we can respond to you that way as well. After we go ahead and get that final selection and go ahead and vet those individuals, we are going to, you know, go on with the transition phase as well as the onboarding and, you know, support for you guys. Here are the deliverables and the timeline that we're looking at. We're looking at about six to eight-week timeline to get this done. I know, you know, with the superintendent space not filled at this time, we definitely want to fill that in a, you know, efficient amount of time for sure. So we definitely, you know, phase one is discovering, you know, the discovery and the community engagement. We definitely want to do the surveys and, you know, speak with the board. Do, you know, we will have, you know, meetings with you guys so that we can get your full feedback on what you're looking for. Week two and week three, we're going to launch that search. We're going to go ahead and launch that search for that new superintendent. And then we're going to go ahead and screen and create a shortlist of candidates so that they can, you know, we can go ahead and go do our due diligence to get those people on that finalist list. When we get that finalist list, that is when we will contact you and let you know what, you know, what candidates we have and, you know, who's vetted, you know. We will do a background check. We will do a credit check. We will do a social media check as well as a cultural check because we want to make sure that the new superintendent has the cultural experience to provide the services that you may need for the students here. Also, we, you know, once we, after the vetting phase, we want to go ahead and do the selection, negotiate your terms, and do the onboarding. So that is, you know, we do guarantee our services as well. We do guarantee a satisfaction like, you know, any other thing we, you know, provide. You know, if you do have issues, we will go ahead and do this search again for you at no additional cost to the district. Like I said, value added is the most, probably the most important thing here to add value to this project because I know that, you know, getting a superintendent for your students is probably the most, you know, important thing here in the district. And so like I said, we want to make sure that that candidate has the cultural competency, has the succession planning integration abilities, and the communication strategies needed to, you know, develop the, you know, public trust and transparency here. Just a little bit about, you know, our past and our past experience. We have done this prior to this. We've worked with the Indianapolis House of Representatives. We're actually working with the, I'm sorry, Chief Commissioner Rodney Ellis right now on some of the CVC that he wrote for the education. So some of the things, we really work closely with elected officials and community leaders to provide our efficient services. You know, what we've kind of gotten out of this, you know, out of this opportunity, we really think that, you know, you guys need a strategic visionary, community-driven leader, and that's exactly what we're looking for to place into this district. Just to review our proposed objectives, like I said, we will facilitate listening sessions and surveys with stakeholders, board members, even parents and educators as well as community leaders, just so that we can get that feedback to ensure that we are, you know, going after someone that you really, really are looking for here. We're going to define that shared vision with the candidate so that we can include value and qualifications on that. Also, we're going to proactively target the higher-performing leaders for this specific position. And we also are going to develop a branding candidate to showcase this district's strengths. You know, we want to promote opportunities through the targeted campaigns as well as, you know, different educational avenues so that, you know, we are strategically placing a candidate here for you. You know, we're going to evaluate the resumes against the defined leadership, and then we will construct, structure, conduct structured interviews, make sure that, you know, performance tasks are done in a, you know, fashionable time as well as, you know, like I said, continue to get that feedback from the community. We are looking at a thirty-day transition plan for this when we do find a candidate for this. So we want to assist you with that thirty-day transition plan to go ahead and transition them in, so we'll be here to help you with that as well. Technology advantages, like I said, we do have the technology implemented in our systems to facilitate, you know, all of the things that you're needing. Far as the dashboard, far as the reports and the analytics, far as the, you know, I know, you know, Conroe ISD has over seventy-four thousand students. So we want to make sure that we are getting this stuff done in an efficient time and that you can see that it's being done in an efficient time. We also, you know, we do safeguard. We follow all safeguarding, you know, regulations with these federal, state, and local policies. We do, you know, safeguard all personal identifiable information, any unclassified, classified information. We do have that safeguarded. And like I said, we have the technology to go ahead and carry out the community surveys, you know, get, you know, get the feedback through a digital form. Cost factors and pricing. Here's our fixed firm price, and here are the services included with this price as all the services that we actually stated in this presentation. Here are our experts. We do have former legislative assistants working on this with us as well as HR professionals who do have that component of hiring, of employee relations, of, you know, different aspects of different, finding different candidates and vetting them as well. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
I'll start at this end this time.
I just have a quick question. You said that you would assign an executive for the superintendent search. Do you have a consultant already?
So yes. We, like I said, I do have on-staff consultant. I do have my HR professionals. And so we will probably be working, you know, directly with them, our HR professionals, and some of the legislative assistants who have done that campaigning with some of the elected officials as well so that we can know how that looks and how that looks far as speaking with the different boards, speaking with, you know, the different community leaders. We want to make sure that we do have that aspect completed correctly, so we will be working with them as well.
Thank you. So thank you for your presentation and all the information. How many superintendent searches have, has your firm conducted in Texas?
So in Texas, we have only completed two, but in Indianapolis, we've completed probably about thirty.
Okay. Thank you. You stole my question, trustee Duncan.
So community engagement is really important to this board to get all the feedback needed. I'm a little concerned about your timeline. I'm not sure how you do all of that in one week. Can you explain how you would do all of that in one week?
So like I said, a lot of our technical or technology is going to help us do a lot of the community feedback. We're, you know, we are, you know, doing virtual meetings. We're going to be doing in-person meetings. We're going to be sending out mass emails to get information from this community as well as different community leaders here in this district. So that's, you know, technology is going to help us a lot.
So this is going to be a virtual?
It's not. So we, like I said, we are going to do a lot of in-person footwork for sure, but we just want to make sure that when we are sending out anything, we're going to send it out through our system as well as reiterate it in person as well.
Okay, thanks. I did have one quick question. Where do you advertise the job posting?
So we actually have a system that we use for recruit. We also have the LinkedIn recruit. We have, like I said, we have a lot of different systems that we utilize for recruiting and vetting systems as well. Also, we do have the, I'm actually working alongside of the prosecutor, so a lot of times I am utilizing that same system as a prosecutor far as the background checks, far as the vetting systems. So that, like I said, technology is going to help us here.
So it's an internal place that you're advertising the job posting?
Yes. We will internally post it. We will post it on, you know, have our LinkedIn recruiter. We do pay for that service. Like I said, we do pay for probably most efficient services so that we can get that out there. And, you know, like I said, we will be doing campaigns on that as well so that we can get that information out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No other question? Thank you, Ms. Cherie. We appreciate your information and your presentation today.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not even going to try Walsh. Walsh, are you, do you have a presentation as far as for the screens or whatever?
I do not.
Okay, so I'm going to ask if you could just give us a couple minutes for us to do our scoring because I was going to try to be efficient and do them in conjunction, so give us just a moment, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Melanie Charleston, and I am senior counsel in the Houston office of Walsh-Gaigas Law Firm. We used to be Walsh-Anderson, which is a lot easier to say. However, things do change. We are a school law law firm. That is all we do, and that's all we've done for forty years. Now, in saying that, as you know, that means we cover the gamut. We are board counsel. We do governance. We do employment law. We do student services. We do board bond work. We do anything that touches a school district, we do. But as a result of that, representing some five hundred school districts in the state of Texas, we were often called upon to do superintendent searches to help them with their, to seat a superintendent. So informally, we have done superintendent searches for many years, but formally, we have done superintendent searches since 2013, and we have done over a hundred superintendent searches very successfully, and it would be our honor to do a superintendent search for Conroe ISD. I have brought a very important person with me. Her name is Dr. Ann Dixon. She would be the education consultant that we would be proposing that you use on this search. She has very definitive things that she would do as an education consultant, and then I would have very definitive things that I would do as a lawyer. So I'm going to bring her up to talk about what she would do, and then I'll come back up to close it out.
Now, if George can tell how long he's been in, I can too. So I've been a superintendent for thirty-four years. I was a permanent superintendent in two school districts and then an interim superintendent in twenty-five. In this area, I've been to Galveston's twice. I was at Montgomery. I always have to think of everywhere I've been. But we feel that experience counts. The only searches that Walsh does is superintendent. We're not an executive search firm. We are a superintendent search firm. I've done fifty- I've done fifty-eight of the searches. Um, Walsh, as they've said, they've done over a hundred now. Our process is totally board-driven. You tell us what you want. We give you the framework. Uh, we are, we have a profile committee that we meet with you. You tell us the qualifications. You tell us what backgrounds you want. We tell you what we offer, and we, you set your timeline. I get to choose who I want to work with, and I choose to work with Walsh. It is completely a turnkey. There is no finger pointing, not at all, from the day we're hired until the contract is signed. The fee includes all the legal services, of agendas, things like that, and the contract. And so, I'd really like for you to remember that because we have that contract component, which can be a bomb sometimes, that you find the person you want and then that part, and Melanie's going to talk about that more. The other reason that I partner with Walsh is confidentiality. It is required by law and to this. The, we, the law firm posts, they send out the applications, and the applications are returned to them, and they're put in a secure portal. There, there will be no breach from our end at all, our confidentiality. And I think the candidates that call me, that's one of the reasons they apply for searches that are conducted by Walsh, is because it protects them also in the job they have. Um, the board will see, another unique process, the board will see every single application. Now, we've heard a lot about technology already, but I will call every single person and do a worksheet on every single person. It's not going to be by a computer or a video or anything like that. I'm going to talk to every applicant. And every, and then you will see my worksheet. I used to call it the poop sheet, but the law firm won't let me call it that anymore, so. Um, we do, um, think that you should do other backgrounds. Uh, I will do the vetting. We call it extreme vetting. If I know the color of their long johns, so will you. You will know everything I know. And I do believe my twenty-fives, interims, I'm still working, my network. But I, somebody asked me one time, hey, give me your phone number, and they said, oh, oh, never mind. I already have it in my phone. Everybody has your phone number. Uh, I will call not only their references, I will call their non-references. I'm going to call their former employers. And most of them know that that's going to happen. And when I ask them on my poop sheet, you know, may I contact your board members? And they say no, and then I say, well, thank you very much. Because if they'll cheat on their wife, they'll cheat on their girlfriend. And you don't want somebody that's going to come here looking all ready for another job somewhere. Um, again, we do use technology in our secure portal. Uh, I think the other thing that makes us a little bit of a designer boutique search firm is we are here every time you are. We are here when you review the applications. I do not bring the top ten. I bring all hundred. And if somebody took the time to fill that out, you're going to take the time to look at it with my guidance, and I'll be able to help you to go through those faster and, and what ones meet your qualifications. We also sit through all of the interviews. We do not participate in them, but we're kind of the fact checker. Some people are, you know, what do they say, all cattle and no barn or something, and, um, no hat. That's it. That's it. No hat. But, um, we sit through all of those, and if we hear somebody say something that doesn't sound quite right, we vet that out. We also do a social media, uh, background, and if you want the credit, we do the credit. They're going to be managing hundreds of millions of dollars here, and you want to make sure they don't have any bankruptcies, foreclosures, or debt verse, um, salary, and we, if you want those things. Our criminal, we do the advanced criminal history check also, and Melanie will tell you about that. Um, like I said, I think that we're one of the most personable search firms. Everybody, I've already had calls. Everybody's calling, you know, are you going to go to Conroe? Are you guys going to do that? So, I think we're very approachable. I think that our success rate, I've never had a busted search. That's where you name a lone finalist, and then it doesn't work out. One of those reasons is because of how we do our contract, and I would like for Melanie to address that.
Thank you, and, and certainly within your packets, you've got all of our information that talks about our, uh, our fees and, and the searches that, that we have done in, in the past, and our, our, uh, our references, and there's also a, um, a tentative timeline. That timeline, it, it can be, is as short or as long as you want it. Um, some people want to do a very quick search. It, it's intended if you want to seat a superintendent before the start of the year, but we don't have to. Some, sometimes there's an interim for a, uh, for a very long time. It's completely up to you. In terms of a contract, what, what is a, a little different, uh, since I am an attorney, I, I speak with, if any of the, the, uh, the superintendent applicants are represented, I speak with their attorneys. Or if they are not represented, I speak with them directly before, uh, the second interview, and I share with them, uh, sort of the, the guideline of what the contract will look like and get their sign off that they are good with that contract. I, um, I like to have everything nailed down before you name a lone finalist because, uh, that's when, uh, the district has the leverage. If you name a lone finalist and you haven't really negotiated the contract, then, uh, then, when, when, uh, once you've named them, it can be very embarrassing. And so, they know that. The, the leverage shifts back to the supple- to, to the applicant. So, that's what we do with contracts, and that's why we're, we're turnkey from the, from the application phase all the way through, um, signing the actual contract with a, uh, with a, your new superintendent. So, again, it, it would certainly be our honor to, um, represent Conroe ISD in this superintendent search. And I will just, uh, cede the, as they say in the leg- I will cede the balance of my time, uh, for any questions that you may have.
I do, uh, since it's right in relation to something you're saying, you just said, I'm going to go ahead and ask my question. Um, you, uh, it was mentioned that it's turnkey and everything was included, but when I read through the fee schedule, it stated that if you become a, uh, retainer program, part of the retainer program, that, the, the attorney's fees, first of all, are done on an hourly rate. And then the second thing that it said is that there are two different price points. If you do it as a, 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 one type of group or the other type, that, that there's two different price points per hour. But how is that turnkey if all the attorney work is done, um, on an hourly rate? Because we won't know exactly how much time it is. And then the second thing is, is the vetting of the contract with the finalist or the second interview, is that an hourly rate as well, or is that part of the, the process with Ms. Dixon?
And I'm so glad you asked. Be- we do, uh, because we do many, many, um, uh, we do many superintendent searches. Some of them are hourly. Your particular one, you wanted a, um, a, uh, more of a flat fee. So, we've included what our hourly rates are, but we've also got, but, but for you all, we've got a, it will not exceed this amount. So, um, our education consultant has a flat fee, and then we have, we bill hourly, but it will not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the, for the legal fees. So, that's, that's, that's where the com- some of the confusion is. So, we will, so you, you'll see, and so if it comes in less than that, you would get the benefit of that.
I, I have a question. Are you finished, President Weller?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it, it seems like as a law firm, you're representing the candidate. How do you, how do you, uh, because you're, you're, you're working on their contracts, correct?
Oh, no.
Yeah, how do you, how the confidence of interest, walk me through that.
I'm so glad you asked that. No, um, candidates have their own attorneys.
Okay.
And the, when, when I say we are a school law firm, we represent school districts. There are some attorneys who represent school districts and individual employees.
Yeah.
We do not do that.
Okay.
I, we only represent, um, the school board. That is our client.
And so, I, pardon me? How would you work with our attorney then?
Hmm, very, oh, very, we, we do that all the time. So, um, uh, as much or as little as they want. So, if, for example, you say, oh, well, I want, uh, I, I'm more comfortable with our, you know, our, our, um, our general counsel, um, negotiating that or whatever, then she and I have a conversation.
Negotiable.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've done that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think also, as the consultant, I'm the only one that talks to the candidates.
Okay.
Until it gets to the contract. The applicants don't call and talk to the lawyers.
Got it.
They, uh, everything, I do the people, they do the.
Then, then she swoops in. Yes, got it.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you for your question. I'm glad I, I'm sorry I was confusing.
Do you give us a list of all the candidates as well, or do you vet them and then bring them to us?
I'm not sure about the order of that. Um, because of the confidentiality, I will bring all of, you will get one hundred percent of the list, and you will see every application in a meeting of application review, all at once. You will. We, we have to be very careful about any type of breach. And so, yes, you will get the list, but you will not get it in advance, just so that there's no finger pointing, that how did that person's name get out, when he probably told somebody himself. Um, but you will get everything at one time together.
If you want it, because there, there are some districts and, and ranks them, and so there are some districts, I only want your As. I only want your As and Bs. They don't want the Cs and Ds. So, it's completely up to, to you. If you want to see everything, you see everything.
I do, on my poop sheet, I do put, I give them a grade, A, B, or C. A means they've met one hundred percent of the qualifications that you set. The Bs are good candidates, but let's say you put preferred a doctorate, and they don't have a doctorate, or they haven't done their dissertation. They might be a C, I mean, a B. The C is everybody out there that's mad and thinks they can do this job. I mean, the Dairy Queen and the bank teller and everybody else thinks that this is just a cush job that gets a big paycheck. And so, those will be the Cs, in addition to red flags. Oh, and Brian, am I going out of my scope with that punishment thing you said? Okay, uh, we do check for red flags. Buyouts, high mobility, you know, um, the S-Bet hit list. You know, anybody that has a red flag also will go to a C, even if they meet one hundred percent of your criteria. Now, when we meet though, you can pull a C if you want. I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hire your superintendent. I'm not going to tell you who to hire. I might whisper who not to hire, but I'm, I'm not going to hire your superintendent.
Thank you, Trustee Semler.
Yes, um, you just answered my question about rating with that. I think that's great. We get the, the whole list. Um, I was also going to ask, do you have comments on there from your interviews that we can look at as well? When you, when you give us the list of candidates?
When you, when you've talked to them.
Yeah, you, you're going to see my poop sheet. It's going to be on the front. It's going to be stapled onto the front. And I, uh, yeah, oh, I'm going to get in trouble now. Go away. Because I, I can ask some of those iffy legal things. I can, does your, will, will your spouse need employment in the district? That's a legal question. Can't ask them if they're married or not. Will your children attend school in this district? That's the kind of stuff I ask. You know, I ask them what their current salary is and what's their anticipated salary. Now, you're going to tell me your price range, but I'm not going to tell them. And if they say something whack-a-mo, and I'm going to say, you are out of their price range, do you still want to be considered? And I have, I have them a lot of times, just say, you know, I really don't because I'm making more than that now. So, don't waste our time or yours.
Thank you.
Trustee Horton or Duncan? Okay. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our, y'all, we are doing so great. Sorry. I'm so proud of us. So, um, all right, we're on to our next, uh, candidate firm for McPherson and Jacobson LLC. Do you have a presentation that we need to get set up? Okay, thank you. All right, trustees, we've got a few minutes. And I forgot to say, um, Ms. Dixon, it's very nice to meet you in person.
Uh, I, we have not technically moved on his presentation enough there. If you, if you want to ask a quick question.
Um, just one more question. It, it, are you the team?
I'm the consultant and she's the lawyer. Now, of course, we have a bunch of people in the background, our, our paralegal that accepts the applications. We have a bunch of matrix things. I wouldn't even begin to tell you. I know how to do all that stuff. But they set us all up with all of our forms and everything. You get the entire law.
She, she's not at a microphone. I'm sorry. I was, I, I was trying not to interrupt you, but they can't hear you. You have to be at a microphone.
Basically, I need you to repeat everything you said. It's got to be.
The gist of it is, she, there's a whole team that will, um, assist her, that do things that she does not know on the technical side.
Exactly. Um, the para, we have a paralegal who, um, accepts, receives the request for the applications. All of that is going to be filtered through our Austin office. Uh, is that right? And, uh, so you get all of them. If there were ever a time that we needed backup lawyers, you have five hundred other lawyers. I'm the only consultant and, um, but I, but we have a huge number of people in the background that will be available.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready, ladies? Okay. Thank you very much for being here today.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Jerry Gibson. I've worked with, uh, McPherson Jacobson for almost two years now. Um, thank you for allowing us to present to you today. You are about to undertake the most important job that a school board has and members of the school board have, uh, because it's really not about, it's not about you. It's not about us. It's about your students. And so, you got to find the right fit of someone who's going to take this great district to the next level. Um, McPherson Jacobson is the, um, third largest search firm in the country. Uh, you can see that we believe every student is entitled to a high-quality education. We strongly believe the quality of education is dependent upon the quality of the leadership, uh, and to ensure each search and quality of leadership for educational excellence. We have one thousand, um, we have conducted one thousand searches in forty-five states. Uh, that's laid out for you in page forty-three that I, uh, folder that I gave you. We have one hundred, uh, excuse me, one hundred and thirty consultants, and, um, uh, one-third of those are minorities and/or females. Uh, our retention rate is impressive, I believe. It's eighty percent stay for a, a minimum of five years, and sixty, sixty percent stay for, um, ten years. The group that has been selected, you see there's four, uh, Dr. Steve Joel, he is actually, represents the central part of the United States. Uh, Dr. Walter Cooper has led several searches in the state of Colorado, uh, Dr. White, and then myself. Uh, those are the four that will be working with you, uh, through this process. Uh, we, uh, what we try to do is very structured. It's very transparent with you. Uh, it's an objective process. Uh, we will, we, you will set a detailed timeline. Usually, for the most part, it's somewhere between eight to twelve weeks. By the time you look at your advertising, having time to come in, we usually rely on about thirty days for applicants to, uh, send in their information, and then we will begin the, uh, the vetting process. We will have met with you and ask you, what are you looking for? Uh, as questions have been asked, I know it's going to be asked. Questions have been asked, I know it's going to be asked, you may look at every, it's your choice, because it's your search. And so if you want the top five or 10, according to what we have found, we will give that. You want all of them, you want them right, we will do it however you ask us and request that we do it for you. It was said a few, by our first presenter, that this is, this is a very reputable district, outstanding reputation, not only the state, not only the Houston area, the state of Texas and the country. And so you're going to get a lot of applicants, I would anticipate, from outside the United States. That's why I'm glad that we're here today, because we've done 40, 45, we've represented 45 different searches, excuse me, 45, in 45 different states. So we have search consultants all over, in fact, they're listed for you on, inside your, I believe it is, I might not be wrong on that. The, I wanna show you on page 51, if you turn there for a second, I would like you to see some of the larger searches that we have performed for districts in the, in the nation. Clark County School District with 309 students, Boward County, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 256,000 students, Orange County, all the way down to those that are in the, your range, 50 to 75, and 75 to 100. That information is there for you, is recent, and some of them are very recent, as in 23, 24 Albuquerque School District. Also, on pages 43 through 50, is a list of the searches that we have conducted. All of them that we have done are listed right there for you, so you can see the comparable numbers that are there, the enrollment of the students. We provide also, like many others, a two-year guarantee, so that if something, if superintendent leaves, for some reason, within two years, we will come back and do another one, for, only for the cost of the expenses of the consultants. There is a dashboard that you may be able to look at and see as applicants apply. We prefer and ask that we do, we can do stakeholder meetings, so that you can hear and get the feedback of what the constituents are thinking. Lot of different questions that will be asked, in fact, you can arrange the questions if you want, if you want to know what people are thinking as you represent them. As I stated, why engage with a search firm? Well, we will do recruiting and vetting with candidates, and objective screening process, verifying the resumes for accuracy, communicating directly with all the candidates throughout the process, navigating open meeting requirements, closed meeting requirements as well, advertising rules. Our advertising is done. So that you know, of course, the TASCAN, TASBE, those things, but AAS, A, Top School Jobs of Education Week, Education Week, print ads, Texas Alliance of Black School Educators, the Association Latino Administration Superintendents, District Administration website, Ed Join, Ed Cowell, and Chalk Beat. I hire school administrators, and of course, anything, if you want it in your local newspaper, we will certainly do that as well. We, as I stated, we've conducted over 1,000 superintendent searches in 45 different states. We stand on the strength of our references. There are references for you in the beginning of the, what I presented to you, references of school districts, of numbers that you can contact and talk to people. We pride ourselves in being flexible and customizing our search and the protocols of that as you want and as you request. As I stated here, the retention, 40% of the candidates also have stayed in the same position for at least 15 years. We do not hire the superintendent, that is your job. We are basically the consultants. We do the recruiting, we look for talent for you, and to bring what you're looking for. We represent the board in this, and we work strictly with you, no one else. As I stated, timeline, we anticipate would take about eight to 12 weeks. It can go as fast or as slow as actually you want it to. It's your search. You tell us how, how fast you would want, but typically, that's what you will see, eight to 12 weeks. The phases, as we would meet face-to-face with you, identify desired characteristics, we would meet phase two, is meeting with the stakeholders. Then we begin to evaluate, read and evaluate the applications files, contact references. We do, like Walsh and Gygos, we know people who know people. You know, I've learned firsthand, just because something is printed out there or is out there, it's not always true. And there was an instance where a consultant was doing a search, and actually called 25 different people to either verify, confirm, or say, no, that's not what happened. So that we feel like it's important that they all get a fair shake, if this is a job that they're interested in. We'll review the remaining shortlist of candidates, assist you in identifying the final candidates that you would like to interview, and then phase five is, if you desire, actually, we would meet with the board and the selected candidates to establish performance objectives and measures. That's, once again, your choice, and as I stated, provide a two-year guarantee. Y'all have that in front of you, I'm not gonna insult your intelligence and read it all to you, the phases are very laid out for you, two and three, of course, five. So, the expenses is not to exceed $49,700. You can see it is broke down for you, saying not to exceed, it's not saying it will cost that much, it will not exceed that much. You can see the, it is somewhat broke down for you in your book, and that is all that I have.
All right. Who would like to start?
You wanna cover a lot in 10 minutes, you know?
Yeah, you really did. Who would like to start us with questions?
Quick question.
Trustee Horton.
Okay.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Trustee Horton.
I was just looking through the different school districts that you found superintendents for. Would we be your first school district in Texas?
Yes, ma'am, we're trying to get a footprint in Texas.
Thank you.
Did you have another one?
No.
Okay, Trustee Nelson.
I have a question for you, sir. You mentioned, and forgive me if it's somewhere in the documents, but you mentioned one of the slides back about a percentage of women and minorities?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that percentage?
One-third.
One-third, okay. Do you have a lot of folks that are looking for specific races or ethnicities?
No, ma'am, we've never been asked that.
Okay, thank you.
But we provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
One question for you. So you are the only consultant for the firm in Texas. Who would the team be then that would be working to help us?
Will it go back to it?
I think it was the first slide.
Yeah, it was...
Sorry, I apologize, I missed that.
No, we're taking in a lot, I promise.
It's on page 13, 29. 13?
28 and 29.
29.
Am I going too far? I might...
There it is.
Right there. Dr. Steve Joel, Walter Cooper, Dr. White has done searches as, closest to Shreveport, Louisiana, which is a pretty large district in the state of Louisiana, and myself, and I am in the Houston area.
You are the Houston area?
Yes, ma'am.
So we would see you the most, is that correct?
I just, you know, like my wife, I'd do what she says. If they say, you be there every time, then I'm gonna be here every time.
Call her first.
You'll, I'll provide the reference there. Yes, ma'am, I would assume that I would be here just about every meeting.
And the rest of the folks, would they be here?
Dr. Joel would be here a majority of the time, because he is, as I stated, he is the, his area that he is the director or supervises is the central region of the United States, so from here all the way up. So those are the ones that I would, I would know would be here absolutely the most. But if you say, we want all four of you there every time we meet, then all four will be there.
Any other questions? All right, Dr. Gibson, I thank you very much for your time today, and you were very efficient with it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
We are up to search firm number five. Is everyone okay, taking a few minutes? Do you have T, Texans for Excellence in Education? Do you have a presentation to load? Okay, we're going to keep working on the numbers here while you do that. All right, we're ready if you are, Texans, Texans for Excellence in Education.
Great. Trustees, thank you so much for inviting T to be here with you today. Before we jump into our presentation, I just wanna go over with you your document packet. On the right hand, I'm maybe a little bit taller than our prior presenters, on the right hand, you will see a complete copy of our presentation for your review, and on the left is a con, is a copy of a proposed contract for your review. I'd like to introduce my colleagues that are here with me today. You, of course, know Hava Armstrong, and I also want to introduce Gemma Paget, who's our Vice President of HR Services. I think Gemma is coming up on finishing her second year with T, so we are part of the team that we're gonna propose to you today. And I already saw the smiles and giggles, but from the very beginning, this board has been blazing their own trail. You have done things your way, in your time, and with your values, and I do not expect this search to be any different. And I want you to see our proposal as an opportunity for you to continue that, to do things, your, your search, your way.
Thank you. Well, we also want to recognize that it's been a long time in Conroe ISD since you've done a search like this. We understand that, we're mindful and sensitive to that, not just you, but your community as a whole. Most parents with kids active in the district have never seen this process play out. And so not only did we think of Conroe as we created this proposal and brought forth our team for you guys, but also the fact that this is going to be a foreign concept and process for nearly every stakeholder involved. And so also with that, change can be unsettling, but it can also be really positive. And so our goal is to make this as smooth and seamless as possible for you, for your community, for your teachers and staff, and most importantly, for the students. Now, how we achieve that is what I call the three Cs, community involvement, communication, and customization. So community involvement is huge. The reason we chose this picture is that although this is seven board members, we know that you take very seriously the job you have to represent your entire community, that you are their representatives, and you want to hear from them. So we wanna give them a multitude of opportunities to give their input and feedback to you over different platforms, and then also make sure that they know about those opportunities and word gets out so that they can be heard. And then we want to communicate all of that information to you in an informational and timely manner. We also want to communicate constantly, not only with this board, but with your community, and our goal is to answer the question before it ever has to be asked. And I think that communication also alleviates some of that trepidation that some people may feel. And then customization, like John said, this is your search, this is Conroe ISD's way. So whether that's the process, do you want to see all the resumes, do you want vetting, how do you, how involved do you want to be? Versus also the timeline, how fast or slow do you want this to go? What do you want the pace to be? And frankly, some of these decisions do not have to be made right now. You may get into this process and have a change of heart, or realize this is too much right now, or we can actually take on a little bit more. Whatever that is, we are here to support you through the process that you see fit, that not only matches this board, but matches your district and what your needs are. And then also, we've customized our team. So it's experts, but experts specifically for what Conroe ISD's goals and visions that this board has stated. So John's gonna, John and Gem are gonna go over that in more detail, but we just want to put you at ease that we are here to support you every step of the way, and we think in the end, this is going to be a great experience for Conroe ISD as a whole.
At the foundation of our proposal, and that's all this is, is proposal, because it's your search, your way. Any of these attributes can be rearranged in any order. If you see an activity and you think, hey, we want to do this first versus last, total your search, your way. But at the foundation is your vision alignment. This is where your ideology, your values, your culture come into play, and it has to be a foundational part of every aspect of this search. We're gonna take those Conroe ISD values, apply the T process, and have perfect fit candidates. We have curated a specialty team specifically for Conroe ISD. As I said, you know Hava and I, so we will skip to Gemma. She's a 30-plus-year HR professional. She's been Chief Human Resource Officer for a major urban district. She has over 20-plus years in recruiting. Cara Blue, she's a school law attorney. She's a former TEA Deputy Commissioner. She's a governance expert. She's worked in two Attorney General's offices and two Governor's offices. Grant Anderson is our school finance specialist. That's a specialty screening that we do with these candidates, is to dive deep into our candidates and their school finance knowledge. Dr. Crystal Rents, I want to skip to the part of her state HQIM expertise. She is a leader in the state, is advising on all the commissioners' products, including the Blue Bonnet product. Let's take a look at the different aspects of our search. First and foremost, a launch meeting. This, of course, is where we're going to set all the parameters. It's your search, your way. We have a lot of things to cover, timelines, candidate profiles, selection criterias, and engagement communication strategies. Then we're gonna post. You can see there, it's the wide breadth of all the different places that we, that superintendent positions are readily posted. Next, we have our community administrative and trustee engagement. We begin that with one-on-one interviews with each and every one of you trustees, each and each cabinet member. We want to get your perspective directly, so that we can include that as we build that candidate profile. We propose doing at least three community forums with translation available, comprehensive survey in English and Spanish to all of those audiences, and then, and you'll see here in just a moment, a customized trustee dashboard where all trustees have access to all information at the same time. We will recruit and screen for you guys, of course. Applicants apply digitally on our T platform, they will upload their credentials there, including a video submission. We do want you to get a look and feel for our candidates. The screening, we provide three different options. Review all applications. We can screen some of those for board predetermined criteria, or we can go to the drawing table, we can customize something during your launch meeting. Interview and selection, we will provide you a customized interview analysis that will include vision alignment, student outcomes record, and fiscal operations record. We have a 200-plus interview question bank for your use. We propose three rounds of interviews, facilitated deliberation, and an offsite interview option availability.
Our contract negotiation process, we're here to assist you along the way, but this is your priorities, your expectations, and your legal protections. We customize each superintendent contract as to what matters the most for you, the board. We're looking at the term, the length, the compensation, benefits, performance evaluations, evaluation criteria, and even the superintendent's participation in executive sessions. But beyond that, we're also here for salary guidance. Our recommendations are... Our recommendations are market-informed and fiscally responsible. One of our top priorities is reducing risk for you, the board, but also creating that strong superintendent-board relationship for the success of the district. We're not here to just develop the contract, but we want to see everyone in Conroe ISD become successful. But we know it starts with that negotiation process of the contract after the lone finalist has been identified.
Thank you. Then we enter into, you know, once we have selected that lone finalist, some ongoing supports during your 21-day waiting period. Again, your search, your way. We can provide transition planning and collaboration with the board to begin. There's no need, that does not have to wait. We can do cabinet introductions, community engagement events, facility tours, a review of written artifacts. We can handle public relations for you. And we will act as an ongoing liaison between the lone finalists and the district, and in particular during those contract negotiations. Some T advantages that we want to bring to your attention are customized Conroe-specific data dashboard. This dashboard will also be customized to what data sources do you want to see? We we put some exemplars there. You know, survey question responses, links to the actual applicant database that you can review at your at your convenience. Of course, this is all, it's been mentioned earlier in presentations, this is all confidential information. So it is secured, it is username, password protected, accessed. So but when something updates here, all trustees have the information for informational purposes, all information at all times. Next, our community engagement, all means all. We want to, we want to provide multiple opportunities digitally, on paper, and verbally. We will do that in surveys, English and Spanish, and forums, English and Spanish. And finally, T offers superintendent recruitment with expertise in your curriculum approach. That is critical. This is such an evolving field on the curriculum landscape that you will be on the cutting edge, probably finding the first superintendent that will have this in their background. And we we see it as uttermost important. Thank you again for having us here today. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to continue serving Conroe ISD.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or want to start us off?
How many superintendents have you hired?
So I'm going to take you back to this screen here. We all know T is a new organization. So collectively, as T, we have only done one superintendent search in Texas. Our team, however, has done 50-plus executive searches. And that's one of the reasons we curated the team we did. We know as an organization. In fact, our in our original mission, we didn't anticipate doing executive searches. But our clients started coming to us saying, we want you to search. You understand our values. You understand what we're wrestling with. And so we honestly wrestled with it for probably about six months and then decided, okay, we're going to have to jump in here, you know, to 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 make sure that we're selecting great superintendents for our clients. We know that's a something that we need to mitigate, and it's part of the reason we created the team that we did.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Yes.
A quick question, can you tell me a little bit more about the Blue Bonnet learning and how you would locate a superintendent that is familiar or understands the ins and outs of it?
Well, I think first and foremost, we need to find superintendents that even, or candidates that even know what Blue Bonnet learning is. You know, that that has that curriculum eye, that is keeping up with those trends. And second, they need to understand the components of Blue Bonnet. You know, and I think this board probably knows better than most. Blue Bonnet can be a political football. But there are very, very specific attributes to Blue Bonnet that we want to make sure that candidates understand. We want to make sure that they understand that the science of teaching and reading is a priority in Conroe ISD. We want to make sure that they're not going to come in with notions of, hey, we're going, you were going this way, I'm going to take you this way. That's that's that that first slide, you know, where we talk about alignment. That goes into that. We don't want someone that's going to be a total mismatch for this district.
Right.
My background is in elementary education, leadership, and human resources. And so early literacy. And so I will be screening for those Blue Bonnet indicators as we go through the screening application process.
Great, thank you. So as a follow-up to that, building on her question. So even if they don't have specific experience with Blue Bonnet, because it is so new and that is a rarity, if they have the tenants, let's say, of that curriculum and their background, that is what you're going to be screening for?
Correct. I retired before Blue Bonnet came out from a large public school. And I know about Blue Bonnet. Anyone that you want as a superintendent, one knows about Blue Bonnet, knows you've adopted it and has done their research on that. And so we'll be looking for that as a strength of someone coming in. There is nothing more important in your new superintendent than, excuse me, their understanding of early literacy in the primary grades.
Thank you so much.
And as a follow-up, trustee Duncan, to that, I would draw your attention to Dr. Crystal Rents's resume in our bid submission. Her comprehensive resume is there. She is, she is a contractor to the Texas Education Agency and has been since the beginning of high-quality instructional materials. I had the privilege of working her on with with her on several different projects. And I recruited her to be part of this search team for that expertise. So she knows the names that are out there. She knows the people that have participated and it will help us, you know, walk through that.
Thank you so much. That's great input.
I just want to confirm, did you say that you would have individual, I think I read it as well as I think you said it, that you would have individual interviews with each of the trustees?
That's correct.
And that also with our executive leadership team?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, that's that's a good thing to know. And also, I was going to ask a question. And you have no problem with answering questions for, that the trustees may have? Not just one or two or whatever, but you'll be able to answer the questions for everyone?
Absolutely. You know, in situations like this, we're exchanging information. We won't be deliberating, we won't be doing all of those things that are prohibited, but exchanging information, providing clarifying information, that is absolutely an allowable activity.
Okay.
So to that question, who would be the point of contact for all questions? Would there be a singular point of contact?
Well, Hava and I will be the primary contacts as we work with you, you know, primarily in in other activities. But depending on what the need is, we're not making any of our team off limits. You know, so I say, you know, if there are general questions or hey, the dashboard's not working or something like that, you know, filter those through us. If you want, if you want to have a question with Dr. Rents, for example, hey, tell me about what you're looking for when you look at these candidates in regards to Blue Bonnet. Absolutely, we'll get you in touch with Dr. Rents. Also, I want to add, all of our team, depending, again, on your search, your way, can and will be available here live in Conroe whenever needed. Of course, the T team is at that disposable, but the other players that we're bringing into the picture, we will make them available to you as well. We want you to hear from the experts, to hear their thoughts and, and you know, why they're making various recommendations.
And that the cost for that is included in this?
It is.
Thank you.
The, just to be clear, and I made this clear in my E-bid submission, the only cost that is not included is if you did select to have off-site interviews, meaning if you wanted to rent banquet space somewhere or a hotel conference room. Some school districts do that. They want it to be, you know, highly confidential. They don't want the school personnel to see who's coming in, who's going out, that kind of thing. That is, that is literally the only cost that is not included. We're happy to facilitate that for you. It was just, it was a little impossible to plan, you know, not knowing how many rounds we're going to do, what are the dates, what's the time of year, you know? So that would be the only excluded activity if you chose to go that way.
Great point.
Yeah, a quick question. Just to clarify, the team that you have brought together, are they going to be looking at each, within their expertise, each candidate, what that person brings in that field specifically?
As, as has been described by the other potential search firms, we will put every single applicant through a process. Of course, that first screen is very, very large. And this is, this is just on our end, where we're making notes, we're making, you know, shit, you know, making those shifts in how you may view those on your dashboard. And they work their way through these various stepstones. You know, we, the last search we did, Grant had a very specific screening with all the candidates that dealt with nothing but school finance. You know, we have very poignant questions that we just, and not that you don't have a wonderful CFO here. I mean, Karen Garza is the bomb, we know that, you know? But we want her, we want a superintendent to know what the struggles are. What is she wrestling with? Can he, can he or she speak the language when Ms. Garza comes to the office and says, hey, we need to talk about this? So I hope that answers your question.
Hi, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the search kickoff session, the initial session? Because that sets the foundation for everything.
It is the most critical part of the search, trustee Mayne. I'm glad you brought that up. You think that 10 minutes is a long time to cover all this until you're, until you're confined to 10 minutes. But I wish I could have talked more about the launch because it's critical of everything. It is a, of course, it's a duly-called board meeting because we're coming together to deliberate direction. So we will be in a workshop format. It will be a facilitated workshop, meaning we're not going to come to the table and just say, okay, what do y'all think? You know, we will have a definite protocol. All of the decision points that have to be made will be completely outlined, agenda-driven, so that, so that there is a, it is a very purposeful process. We, we don't have a dog in the hunt of which way it goes. We just know where are the decision points. And we will facilitate that discussion as you trustees decide, hey, we're going right or left on on this decision point. At the end of that, we do craft it into a master plan or a strategic plan for the search. And as I've heard other search firms mention, then we have to commit to that plan because that's when things derail. You know, if we get midway through and you're like, oh, you know, we did, I want to do this instead of that. Well, once you start, there are many HR implications and employment implications when you open things with one set of standards and then try to shift mid. And we certainly don't want to put the board in any kind of legal liability. So that would be my, that's why that meeting is so important, is we really have to dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure that we're all on the same page. It goes back to that original slot about alignment. That is the, that is the key focus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the super that you placed? And when was it? And if you can't name the district, could you tell us a little more about the size and demographics and how it relates to?
It was a 2A school district, actually in central Texas outside of Austin. We had 38 applicants for that position in a, which was a great applicant pool for this school's demographics and their pay points and such. We brought that down to, I believe that board screened eight applicants face-to-face. We also did three rounds of interviews there. They, they opted to very fast-track their search. And you talk about trying to iron out the details of a contract. When you're fast-tracking a search, that is a, that is a very challenging thing to do when you're interviewing people and you're naming a lone finalist that night. So it was, it was definitely a, you know, it was a very fun search, but it was a challenging search just because of their timeline. Now, we were, we met Ever Milestone. They are extremely happy with their candidate. We had, we had applicants from UMBLE. We had applicants from Dallas ISD, Lake, Lake, Worth ISD, Midland. We had many small school districts that applied. So it was real interesting to see how that, how that shook out.
And that, that super was placed in 2025?
Yes, we just placed them in, we opened the search in March and we placed in May.
Thank you.
Yes.
Where do you post your applicant or your job posting? What platforms?
Okay, we, there are very typical platforms, and I'm glad you brought this up. Here in the middle of this slide, of course, the typical, you're going to want to post on TASSA. That's where all school administrators go. And especially if you're in the job hunt, that's, that's, you're going to stop by TASSA for, of course. There's a, there's a website that's very much frequented by school administrators called TexasISD.com. We will also foot the, foot the cost for a premier listing, which means it's a, it's a banner ad, it's accentuated on their page. It's all branded to Conroe. You know, it's your colors, your logo, your searching, all of that kind of thing.
So you'll have a reach beyond Texas with these platforms if need be?
Well, in the, in the proposal, we said that we could extend this to national if, should the board choose that. I didn't list national here. As has been mentioned by others, there are certain national level sites that we would include. I didn't take, I didn't list those here, but they are in the expanded proposal that we submitted. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are we good? Any other question? Go ahead.
A follow-up question regarding the speed and where the placement, I guess, or where the negotiation of the contract falls within that. We heard one presenter mention that that negotiation happens at a specific time. So it ensures that the board remains with the leverage for the negotiation. Is that something that you can ensure?
Absolutely, as long as the timeline cooperates with that. The only, the scenario where it gets difficult is when you're doing literally back-to-back interview days, meaning I'm doing a round one here, I'm doing a round two here, and I'm doing a round three here, and we're voting to hire at the end of round three. That's when it gets challenging because you don't, there's just not time available.
So if we avoid that scenario?
If you avoid that, absolutely. And what I would suggest is a week grace period in between your final round of interviews before the day you name the lone finalist. That gives you a full week to do all the negotiating. You know, you're going to indicate probably to your board council or we have Cara Blue on our team that would be, you know, if you wanted her to do that, she absolutely could do that as well, or a combination of the two. I will highlight Cara has done some amazing work in superintendent accountability. We just worked with her to pass right at 20 policies that focus on superintendent accountability in another large district in Texas. So she does bring that expertise in how superintendent evaluation should be connected in with the superintendent's contract. But yes, having a gap there is, we will all be thankful for a gap during that negotiation period.
Something to be mindful of.
Absolutely.
And that is all part of the the fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you very much for y'all's time. And it was very nice to meet you, Ms. Gemma. Thank y'all. Okay. The next search firm up will be Ray and Associates. Do you have a presentation that needs to get loaded over there?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could just give us while you're doing that, we'll do this and we'll be back together in a moment. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome. We appreciate you coming out and sitting until the end.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll just say, my name's Dave and that's it, right? Since it's the last one. Thank you for having us today. Thanks for inviting us. Thank you for spending the time today and doing your due diligence. You've got some great search firms here. You have great people here, and I know you have a difficult decision. But we're honored to be part of the process. My name's David Faltis, and I represent Ray and Associates. I was superintendent in Navasota, kind of down, a little bit down the road from you guys. Dr. Stockton, who was a superintendent years ago, he and I came on board within the same month and kind of did some of our first-year training together. And he and I became dear friends. And back in the day, I coached him, Brian, and you guys were in our district. So we were over here playing your middle school teams. And so I feel like it just feels comfortable. And so I feel like, it just feels comfortable coming back to Conroe. So I now live in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I was superintendent in Navasota for about three years, and then I was superintendent in Southlake Carroll for 15 years, a district that I still kind of consider similar to you guys because of the expectations, your community support, and obviously some of your demographics, you know, are similar to what we dealt with in Southlake. And then I retired at the end of '20 after, you know, we kind of got kids back to school from COVID. We were one of the first ones in the metroplex to get our kids back. We felt like that was the best place for them to be. And then I retired and began working with Ray &amp; Associates. I'd actually looked at an out-of-state position and kind of fell in love with their process and their people and how they took care of candidates, and hopefully I'll be able to describe some of their process today. And then I served 75, 80 school districts around the state as a financial advisor in Texas, and so still pretty plugged in to kind of what's going on around the state, keeping up legislative matters, and just absolutely love pouring back into young and aspiring and upcoming superintendents. So I feel like we have a very similar network to some of the folks that you've talked to today. You can see this is, we'll go through the team a little bit. Again, I am a managing director with Ray &amp; Associates, have been working with them since January of '20, I think. Now, I forget my names, or years, but January of '20, so I've been there nearly five years. And so I'm on the leadership team there. One of our consultants is Dr. Hector Dominguez, who's a superintendent in Rungy. He's a fantastic gentleman, bilingual, and will be a great part of our team. We have a gentleman, Dan Bittman, and Dr. Karen Hall are both managing directors, will be on the team. More from a distance, as far as boots on the ground, it'll be me and Hector, but Dan could be here at any time. And then the other two members of our teams are Vice President Molly Schwartzoff and Kathy Schoenfelder. We're one of the few firms that I know of that have full-time office staff, and the great thing about that is if there's something that you need, you call me or text me and say, hey, I need to see this, Kathy will have it to us within minutes. She's just fantastic. And Kathy could also be here to conduct stakeholder meetings or other meetings that we have. So we have plenty of people that can be on the ground here for you and will be happy to serve you. Obviously, you know who you are. Fantastic district. You're, you know, one of the top districts in the state. People know where Conroe is. They know about Conroe. They know what Conroe means. They know a lot about your campuses and the accolades, and just like you do. But again, we're honored to be with you guys. So who are we? Ray &amp; Associates has been in business since 1975. We've conducted a little over 1,600 searches over that time period, and I think we've really fine-tuned the process that I think works really, really well and works well for you. A lot of things that we do are very similar to what the other firms do, right? But there's some things that I think they're a little bit of the secret sauce. We don't have a poop sheet necessarily. We have a, we have a candidate report that we provide. Sorry. Ann and I go way back, so. But, you know, we try to, the big thing is we try to keep you informed, keep you in the loop. Obviously, as has been said several times, this is your search. We do, I think, have a fantastic process. We've got a great grip on a process, but it's flexible and amenable to what you determine works best for you and your constituents and stakeholders, and most of all kiddos. You know, as far as the candidate pool, we track, the analytics say that we hit, we get about 28,000 unique hits to our website every month. These are just people kind of going, you know, cruising by, seeing what's going on, looking for jobs. We have a pool of about 3,500 people that are registered users on our site, which means that if Conroe selected Ray &amp; Associates, once we developed a profile, we would shoot that email out to about 3,500 users to see if there's either an interest or if they know someone. We have 35 or 40 associates around the country from Washington State to Virginia, Delaware to Texas, Iowa, that we would notify immediately, and they would start doing the same thing, start looking at candidates, looking at your profile, determining if there's someone that kind of fits that profile. And as we talk about it being your search, one of the first things we would do, if you selected us today, in the next two or three weeks, you're going to either talk to me or Hector or Kathy one-on-one, where we'll do kind of some onboarding with you. We'll be asking you questions, asking your hopes and desires and dreams and wishes, and what are the pitfalls, what are the things we need to look out for, what candidates look out for, what type of candidates you're looking for. So we start with you and building that profile through those one-on-one interviews. And then we expand that out to district-wide. When we did the search in Round Rock, it was, at the time, it was about a 55,000 kid district. We did about 30 stakeholder meetings, and we work with you and your district staff to determine who those stakeholders are. That may be through feeder patterns, it may be elected officials, it may be your PTOs, you know, and obviously your leadership team, administration cabinet level. We'll visit with the interim, just to see kind of what they feel like from the, a little bit of the inside out. We can do those virtually, we can do them in person. Some people still do a combination of things because, as we all know, parents are busy. I mean, you're picking up that kid and getting them to soccer or dance or, you know, and so it's sometimes hard to get to a 5:30 or 6 o'clock stakeholder meeting, so we'll try to do some of those virtually if we think that's a benefit to you. And then we'll provide you some feedback from all of those meetings as we build the profile. We'll work with you with all that information to build the profile, what you think the ideal candidate would be. We also do a 31 qualities assessment that's sent out to every stakeholder in the district. We love for kids to take that, and so you can see what your stakeholders believe are the top qualities that they're looking for in the next superintendent. And we think that's all very, very important as we build that profile. And then all that gets filtered down through your assistance to create that profile of what we're looking for, whether it's someone who's been a classroom teacher, has a doctorate, has a financial background, has been an elementary teacher. You know, whatever that profile looks like, it will be developed through that process, and then we will filter those applicants through that, through that profile. We talked a little bit about recruiting. Again, use very similar locations that most people mentioned today, Tassanet, Texas ISD. We'll do some of the national organizations as well. Some of those are no cost for your staff to post on. Some of those, there are some fees in our proposal, I think on page 40, there's an outline of our fees. We have a kind of a base cost and then not-to-exceed cost, and then you see there's a line item for advertising that could be zero, or it could be more than that. That's just kind of the ones that we recommend typically coming around $1,500 to do those national sites. But we recruit, again, through that, those national postings, through your state and local postings, through our associates, through, you know, just kind of our organization nationally. I believe that Conroe, you may very well hire a superintendent from Texas, but I think you will get a lot of people looking at you from the national perspective, just because you're that kind of a district. Then we'll help you in screening candidates, and the same thing, we can provide, you can see every candidate that's applied. You can say, David, we just want to see kind of the top 10 or 12. We'll filter those kind of on a high, medium, low basis. Again, very similar, if a doctorate's preferred or not preferred, or if you want somebody who's been a superintendent, or maybe they've been a cabinet level in a certain-sized district, you know, we'll filter those by those criteria and bring that to you. Typically, we'll take those 10 or 12 and kind of narrow them down to six or seven for a first-round interview and go from there. One thing that we do in the interview process that I think is unique is we provide a, it's a force-fit matrix for you. As you finish the interview, then you kind of rank candidates, and I, this is a process when you start it, you kind of go, what are we doing? And then by the time you end up, you're like, oh, my word, this is so simple and makes it just really easy. And so we really like the matrix, so we help you reach consensus on candidates. Doesn't mean you can't go out and grab another one. You know, it just helps you to see, hey, here's what we all collectively think about those. We help you with, you know, interview questions, setting up those interviews and all those sorts of things. We do provide some one-way videos that we think are important because for a district like Conroe, this person's going to represent you. They're going to be the tip of the spear, if you will. So it's, as you start to vet candidates, it's nice to see how they present themselves, even if it is just a one-way video. This is just an overview page of the things that we've talked about, the things that, you know, we think are important. We do, you know, vet candidates. You have to Google searches and online. If you've been a superintendent for a while, there's a story out there. And if the candidate has the qualities that you're looking for, but there may be a negative story, I may present that to you, and you can decide in Conroe, that story's not going to fly. Or in Conroe, eh, that's, that happens, and we move on. But we try to dig into those and let you know if there's good, bad, or otherwise. I think so, we think our process is great. We think we have a great team. We've done this for a long time, and we'd love to work with Conroe ISD. So I think that's, we've got 20 seconds left. The important pages, the timeline, that we've given you a sample timeline, I think is on page 30 or so, and those cost estimates are on page 40. Any questions?
Questions?
I have one. I'm looking through my email to see if I can find it. I wrote down that you guys price match. Is that correct?
Thank you for bringing that up. We do, we do offer a price match where if, you know, if you're down to two firms and there's, you know, differences, if their scope, or if our scope is similar to theirs, we can do a price match for you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't want price to be the reason you decide, eh, we're not, we don't want to use Ray. You know, I mean, obviously, there's, you're going to pay the bills, but we want to work for the district and be reasonable.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. And forgive me, I don't have your paperwork in front of me, so I'm just going off of what you said, but I did hear you say that you are located in Iowa originally?
Yes, our main office is in Iowa. We have a, an overarching company that's actually in Minneapolis. I'm in, I've been in Dallas for Southlake.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I apologize as well. I don't have your information in front of me. Did you say the price was listed on page?
38. 38.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. PDF page 40. Excuse me. Yeah, page 38.
You mentioned in your cover letter that you're committed to DEI. Can you talk about how that influences the super search?
It depends on what the board desires. We, you know, about 40% of our placements are women or people of color, and our applicant pool tends to reflect that. But it really depends on the district and what you guys desire. That's not, you know, it's not something that we put on a flyer, you know, that's, I mean, if that's not something the district desires. But as we work nationally in some of the districts we work with, that's important. But you know, in Texas, we, that's probably not on every flyer in Texas, I'll say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? I was a little concerned because it wasn't just, like, once in your presentation for your firm, but it was from beginning to end that it, there's a huge focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Sure.
And, and so, I mean, that, I'm glad that you just said that it's based on us, but what I am concerned about then is the vetting of the candidates, that it's not vetted based on that.
No, it's based on their characters and qualities. And I, I'm the one that puts together a spreadsheet and filters, and there's nothing in that spreadsheet. There's no category for, I don't think anything that you would consider DEI. It tends to be campus leadership experience, teachers' experience, doctorate, non-doctorate, campus-level leadership, that sort of thing.
And then the other question I had was, where, how would the communication as far as to the board work? As far as I noticed in your presentation that we received with the RFP, it says that there'll be a board contact person and an administrative contact person.
Typically, if we're selected, we would want to have a kickoff meeting with you guys, a workshop similar to what John mentioned, to where we would go through, kind of check and list on, okay, is everybody good with their calendars? Who do you want to have as a contact person from the board? Is there someone on the administrative staff as far as scheduling stakeholder meetings, that sort of thing? Who do we need to have as a primary contact person for both? But again, if you said, you know what, everything needs to go to the board every time, we'll do that as well. Typically, we work through the administrative team, then they send things to the board, so there's not an opportunity to reply at all, you know, as far as to, you know, to a search group. We don't want to put you in that kind of a situation. But we work all that out in that first meeting, that kickoff meeting.
And did I also read that there would be individual, yes, I saw individually, meet with each trustee?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I just was reading it in there.
Yeah, if we're selected, yeah, in the first week or two, we'd do most likely a phone interview unless you wanted me to come down and go to coffee, you know, and we'll work through kind of a set, similar set of questions that we would present to your stakeholders, so you can kind of see what the feedback, what kind of feedback we're going to be asking your constituents.
Any other questions? Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to say David, because that's what you started with.
David, that works for me, absolutely. Thank you and good luck.
So I appreciate your time. Also, I just want, meant to the whole group, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, I just want to thank each of you sincerely. Thank you for your time for coming in today and the amount of work that it takes to put these together and individualize them for our district, and we appreciate that and we recognize that. And I know that's what you're here to do anyway, but I just wanted to say that. We appreciate your time and effort and the thought that went into them, and I guess at this point, we will, we need to take a break, please, before we get on to the next stage, if that's all right, and we will do that now. The time is 3:08, and we will be in recess for, until about 3:20. Darn it. Sorry, it is 3:27, we are back in session, and thank you for your patience while we took care of some technical things. And Mr. Bussard, if you could get us going again?
Yes, ma'am. So we're going to slow walk through a little bit of this. Ms. Deska and Ms. LaBord will be here. They'll probably be on either side behind you. They're going to be here to answer any technical questions, help you through. Many of our folks that have done evaluations have done this process a lot, so they're well-versed. But we want to be there for you. Just know that we're not there to tell you how to enter your score or say anything like that. It is just the technical side of it. So you all should have received the link to your district email. You're going to click on that, the link that's inside the email, and you're going to create a user ID and password. And I'm just going to ask you to follow the instructions that it gives you for the user ID and password.
The first thing mine's asking is for a new password. That's, that's normal? That's okay?
I believe so. They just set up a new password.
I like being called very weak. That's my feeling.
Well, after, after you do it the one time, you'll be fine.
I know, that's my feeling. I'll take it personally.
Okay, I have put it in, and mine is very strong, I was going to say.
Oh, excellent.
And, but...
So we'll just have, we'll just have everybody get to that phase first and then...
Okay.
I appreciate y'all's patience because sometimes it's hard to talk people through the other side when you don't see it.
I think I'm stuck here, it's not moving.
I know, mine's not moving either.
Mine's froze. Like, I can't find it. I'll put it to top state. So just save it and see what happens?
Mine says unexpected error.
I would close on that and go back.
Do this. Plus, there's user error. I'm using Mac now, so it's been a while since I've been on PC.
They're good. So then it'd be right next to the, going into the scoring? Then it would be going into the scoring next, scoring page? Acknowledgement. Yep, that's what I had as the next step. So is everybody? Not quite yet, no problem. We're going to hold off.
You did a great job.
Oh, no, look at the folks behind you. They're the ones doing it right there. These two professionals.
I just want to make sure that wasn't the reason why it was it. I just want to make sure that wasn't the reason why it was that.
All right. Yep. So you should be in the acknowledgement page now. So you're going to, if you'd like, you can read through the acknowledgement. And at the bottom, I believe you checkbox and type your name in. Has everybody done that? Once you're done, we'll, we'll just, like I said, once everybody's there, we'll move to the next step. And then after that, I'll kind of get out of your way.
All of this remains confidential?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just was asking because I was reading through it.
Yes, ma'am.
You're so smart. You're so smart.
No, no. We're ju- Yeah, we're ju, yeah, no, you're fine. We're just, like I say, I'm, I'm watching everybody. And when I see everybody look at me, I think we're good to go after that. We're good. All right. All right, love it. Uh, I love the attention, by the way, so. Um, so what'll happen, now you're in the scoring module. So I'm gonna give you just a basic overview. As you access each, the first firm, you'll enter a score for each of the sections that are on your scorecard. Now, I will tell you that on one side, I believe it's the left side, you're going to see documents in there, like PDFs. Those were provided to you prior to this. So if you want to go through them, you can, but I promise you, you received every bit of that, okay? Um, if I was scoring this remotely, that's how our people get the documents, so. Um, so anyways, once you complete, uh, the first one, you'll have the option to move on to the next firm or go back to the homepage. Once you've scored all four, all firms, you will go back to the homepage and select submit. It's very simple. But like I said, we've got our team here to help you out. Uh, prior to submitting, you are welcome to go back through each firm, verify with your sheets, make sure that you put the correct number in. Um, but once you submit, that closes out your scoring. Once everybody is done scoring, will, Katie will acknowledge that she received scores from every single person. And then we will close out the scoring session. Katie will work on the big tab section for you all. And then, uh, we'll collect the, uh, scorecards and the documents that were provided to you. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I've just noticed that it's not in the same order that we, uh, that we had in the presentation.
I mentioned it super early, but I knew you'd say it again.
I just want to make sure we all see that.
So if you put your sheets in alphabetical order, that's the order that-
Thank you.
And all of them show up. So, thank you for saying. No, sorry. Enter criteria, sorry.
Thank you. I was looking for that as well. Okay.
Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead.
This is quite a-
Um, I believe there's you, we're gonna hit the submit button in the top-left corner. We're gonna have, since you spoke up first, Ms. Deska's gonna look to verify. I think it's submit. Since you submitted yours, did you receive trustee Nelson, too? Okay, great. I'm just gonna check in, has every, how many have submitted, or think they submitted? One, two, three, four. She has more. No, it's okay. Please take your time. No. Please, please, no. Yeah, it is absolutely no rush. Yeah. And just to kind of reiterate while we're finishing up, uh, once Ms. LaBord has all seven of your evaluations, we'll come and collect the scorecards and the materials that were handed out. One, two, good. That's great. Yeah. That. That's... So what Ms. La Board will be doing right now is she's going to work on the bid tabulation. It's very similar to what you all receive in board documents from the purchasing department. The only difference is, is there will not be a recommendation from the purchasing department along with the bid tabulation. We'll simply give you the results, and we'll step away at that point. Okay? All right. So if you will bear with me for just one second, if everybody could just look at your neighbor and make sure you all got the similar copy, the same copy. I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean to say similar. So we pulled them right off the printer and gave them to you. I just wanted to make sure everybody... Okay? So President Alden, any more questions for me?
Trustees, are there any more questions for Mr. Bressard? All right. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
I do want to clarify that even if this is, can we? No?
I mean, you can.
Oh, no. Okay.
I don't care. Go. If you have something.
I want to clarify one thing. It might be a legal question. Are we voting strictly based on scoring?
Mm-hmm.
That you're not obligated to do that. It's you, you can score, you can vote however you want to.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah.
Do I, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the board select the first-ranked proposer for superintendent search firm as Texans for Education and Excellence and authorize the interim superintendent to negotiate and...
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
And execute the contract documents, and if contract terms cannot be reached with the first-ranked proposer, that the award goes to the second-ranked proposer, who is, you're going to make me say this, Walsh Gallegos Kyle Robinson. Gallegos. And continues on that, in that fashion until the agreement is reached and the contract executed.
I'll second that.
I, is there discussion? I do have a concern on who's negotiating, only because our interim superintendent may decide to cast his, his resume into the search.
Who would you like to...
Maybe, uh... Ms. Garza, our CFO? Or the, or Ms. Garza and myself, or Ms. Garza and an officer? I, I mean, the amendment to your motion, I would, I would ask that we make that amendment.
I'd accept that.
Okay. Which, you need to word it exactly how you want it.
Do we need to vote first? Or no?
Well, you can amend your own motion to change.
Okay.
Oh, okay. There you go. That might be easier.
Yeah.
So who do we want to...
That, if you're making the amendment...
I'll make the amendment. I move that the board select the first-ranked proposer for superintendent search firm as Texas Excellence in Education and authorize a board president and CFO, Karen Garza. Are you okay with that, Ms. Garza? Okay. To negotiate and execute the contract documents, and if contract terms cannot be reached with the first-ranked proposer, that the award goes to the second-ranked proposer, which is Walsh Gallegos Kyle Robinson, second-ranked proposer, and continues on in the fashion until an agreement is reached at a contract, and a contract is executed.
Second.
Okay. Now we can take a vote on that.
Well, do we have discussion? Or are we...
I, do we have any discussion outside of that?
If we're not comfortable with the first-ranked proposer, what do we do? We just vote no?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion presented, please show by the uplifted hands. The vote is five, two, and the motion carries. Oh, I have to ask for the, I'm sorry. All those opposed? Thank you, ladies. Okay. The motion is five, two, and the motion carries. The vote is five, two, and the motion carries. All right. Seeing as we have no other need for closed session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right. And we are now in adjournment, and the time is 4:04.